A hundred dollars is when you tell people we have trails, everybody's going to tell you yes. When you ask them, are you willing to donate a hundred dollars to build trails? You you get a different response. And so that's that's the reason I wrote.
I was actually surprised how many said yes.
But it's it's just like the bricks in the, you know, at the Smith Family Park. Anybody could have bought one of those. Anyway.
There's still selling.
The guy that answered, yes, yes, in number one was probably the one that said he'd pay a hundred plus in question number two.
Well, and 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 there are also people who may not, I I wouldn't necessarily use the trails. But if, you know, there was a, if we all donate a hundred bucks, we can do an extensive trail system. I I'd be happy to donate to that just myself because it's. I I think it's one of those things that improves the quality of life in the city. So.
Really had something that we were promoting. And you advertised it. We had Steve put all the whistles and bells on it. I think you'd get a pretty darn positive response from people. They may not donate a hundred dollars, but they donate their twenty five or their fifty or whatever. Because I can't see a lot of strong sentiment against it. It's more apathy.
Right. I and 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 I think you're right. And if somebody only could. Donation is so much better than taxes. And if you can get people to, you know, that that trust that a hundred percent of what you give us will go to this. Whether that be a library or whether that be a trail system or the development of a park. If if people have that level of trust with the city, I think they're far more likely to do it. And they feel much better about it than if we impose a tax. So. I I would not give up on that concept. But it was interesting how the numbers worked out on that. Everybody likes the expansion of roads. Greg was very popular. Everybody pretty much liked the bridges. I would like to. Bridges are not feasible at at these at these locations. Bridges are going to be challenging anywhere we propose them. So.
People have stepped up right against the canal there where the bridges are gonna go.
Well, yeah.
I think it's one of the developments.
Do you believe that there should be other bridges across the canal? And twenty seven people said yes. That one actually surprised me a little bit. Community facilities, we had good support for a library. And that's funded by the county if and when that ever happens. It'd be or it's actually a joint project with the county in Far West City. If you have an opportunity to drop in one of the new libraries. We went to the one in South Ogden there by Ogden Regional Hospital. When this was very first proposed to the city. And I was taken back because I was not a proponent of a library. I thought it was an antiquated idea. And you go into one of these new libraries and. I I mean, they are. There's something there for everybody. I was actually very impressed. So.
The one.
Yeah.
I've seen the plans of the one over here. And it actually in the plans has an amphitheater as well that'll go against the canal. And so, yeah, it's it'll have all the latest.
It almost becomes a city, a civic center in many respects.
Pretty much, yeah.
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 Probably have one of the bridges coming.
Perfect, yeah.
So the civic center idea with the old. Old City Hall seemed to be pretty popular. I I think we'd need, I mean, before prices went nuts, I thought it would be a hundred thousand dollars. To put that in the condition that it should be in. There were those that disagreed with me that thought we could do it for less. But. You know, the city, I think, needs to move either in that direction or see if we can't find funding some other way. Because it's a shame to have that building just sit.
Yeah, it's going downhill.
Now, that's, I I don't know why that is, but when a building just sits, it deteriorates faster than when it's used. Have you ever used a pickleball court? Has everybody here used a pickleball court here in the city?
Not in the city.
I've used Smith Family Park and now the park, so.
Who? I was an avid tennis player and I just haven't got around to it. But I've been told for somebody in my vintage. It's it's a good alternative to handball.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
It scares me with my knees as bad as they are scares me to death.
Yeah, they are.
Well, and they do that indoor here too, so.
They've actually got room down at Mountain View for two more setups out there.
So. Another thing we ought to consider here, when you have a venue within your city that thirty percent of the city uses. You are knocking the ball out of the park. I mean, that is a big win. And so if if we have, you know, essentially thirty percent of the population using those pickleball pickleball courts. That's a huge win.
And and here's an interesting thing. Of all the sports venues, that covers a broader age range than almost anything else. You know, so I mean, it makes sense.
And it's been popular like this for years.
A lot of people get there early just to claim their place.
And it's not just for us.
There are lots of people that.
There's groups that come in, uh, I've noticed during the middle of the day, while they're up there in the middle of the evening, I know they just definitely do. But usually in the evenings, early morning, it's over.
And there's a problem with the time around the Smith Park a while ago. And one of my neighbors was, he was one of the guys that balled out. The Public Works for not having it because the lights would go out. They were just, it's like they were just like this addiction thing.
They were they were in the midst of athletic competition.
Lights on so they could play longer.
My friends, they knew they could come a little bit earlier.
We could talk to them.
Pickleball course, just make the fences a little higher so when you hit the ball out, it throws to somebody else's court.
It's not tennis. It's pickleball.
I know.
Yeah, but you can still overhit it.
Pretty hit those balls.
I've never done it. I've seen it played.
Uh, the support for the Public Works Building was. Great support there. And, you know, a building. A commercial building, the lifespan really is about twenty years. We use them longer than that and and usually at at a detriment. Even a good building, the lifespan's about fifty years. And that building over there has got to be forty years, Lou.
It's.
It's a long time, so definitely needs to be replaced. Have you used the rec center? Interesting, two thirds of those who responded have used the rec center again. You know, if that's a reflection of the of the population, that is a huge success. You just don't get that level of success for a single venue within the city. So. Well, we're hoping that that's what that is, is is that type of representation. So.
I didn't use rec center.
All right, we're knocking it out of the park. Uh. Let's see, I I turned pages the wrong way. I'm sorry.
I moved here to build my forever home. We need to keep it that feel.
Well, and again, that's the same problem. That's that's people who. I'm here, I want to be the last one here. You can't do that.
Can't prevent a loan order from selling these property to developers.
Well, and we had an overwhelming response that people wanted us to support individual property rights. And and that's what that means.
Well, they don't think they realize that.
Well, they think that means I can do what I want and have my way, but not not my neighbor.
Backyard.
Can't do what he wants.
Yeah. All right. Parks and Rec. Everybody liked the standard we used. Good response on all the park questions. Where I sweat.
First question.
Yeah.
Did I do that again? No standard, ten acres.
Maybe that's why somebody said that's a lot. Maybe we could have had two more votes for yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I I did, actually did that one other time on another report I wrote. So. I think people, I hope people understood. The mileage goal was good. The ADA ramp, interesting enough, received good support. And the. The location of the parks received good support. Which type of moderate housing do you prefer? Patio homes and. Let's see.
I I find that the disparity between B and D kind of surprised me.
Yeah.
A single home on a smaller lot, if it's a patio home, great. If it's a single dwelling on smaller lots that you don't call a patio home, they don't like it. Now, would you explain that to me?
Well, they. No, well.
I think it's just the popularity.
So a patio home is generally a single level.
Oh, I see.
Whereas if you've driven, you can see some of them from the freeway where there are multi-story homes right next, yeah.
Right on top of.
And I suspect that's what people don't want.
In this regard, do we need to resurrect our mixed residential density?
We'll have that conversation in just a minute.
Okay, because.
Uh, the prescriptive code and the broad goals, I suspect that question was not very well understood. So I I don't know that we should even consider that. And number three, they overwhelmingly support fifty five and older. We can do that, and I think we should add that to the to the general plan and push this through.
Is it unconstitutional?
Yeah. I don't think they understand the constitution. Anyway. So, you know, as far as answering the the legislature for the the requirements in this year's legislative session. It's pretty obvious what our what our goal should be. And I think that was the favorite of the city council and the planning commission. We do need to understand that is not going to be enough. Not necessarily a bad place to start. But it's not going to be enough. So. To lose point. And and we can tell the the city council. We've essentially given you an answer to the moderate income housing issue. You tabled that. The ball's really in your court, not ours. I thought we did some good work on that. Plan. I I think it will be, developers will come in and they will push very, very hard that it's not enough. And so the city's got to be ready to push back, frankly. And.
You know, in in that regard. They like to give it back to us without making decisions themselves. And we found that out, I mean.
Oh, my gosh, that was a circus.
Okay, if they tabled it, what is it about our proposal they didn't like, they would like us to rework? You don't just say, well, this bothers me a little bit, but we're not going to give you some specific directives. So how do you get out of that loop?
That's actually the way this is. They tabled it. They did not ask us to do additional work. But if they ask us to do additional work, it needs to be specific. Because we have. I mean, there was a lot of work that went into that.
Well, that was our last shot.
Right.
So if you've got an improved thinking, give us your improved thinking and we'll reconsider.
Right. And and we can then, you know, if they want a different density or 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 something else, if they want to add the option of broad range goals was, which isn't necessarily a bad idea. The the benefit of broad range goals is the developer comes in, and these are people that do this for a living. Okay? And so they come in and they say, look, on this piece of ground, we think we can make this the best for the city and the best for us. By and then they would present a conceptual plan of what they want to do. And at that point, they want to present a very livable community because they have skin in that game as well. Whereas if we go with the prescriptive code, which we have presented to the city. Then all the developer has to say is, look, I met your ordinance, we're done. And that's true. That's how that's game, that's how that game is played. So. But we can't do anything until the city council hands that back to us. And we've been asked not to freelance. The the new mayor does not want us to to take things on without the direction from the city council. So we're waiting for direction from the city council. Sure.
Revisit, you tabled it, revisit it. Give us some specific concerns slash comments. And allow us to reconsider. They didn't reject it. They just tabled it.
Right.
Which means they're not satisfied with the present version. So I think we need to kind of a little bit to get them to think about it enough to come back and and give us some directive. Which is kind of a hard sale sometimes, but.
Well, we can ask for, you know, we presented a a plan for mixed use residential. It was tabled. There's never been any feedback. We would like feedback on why it was tabled.
I think it was a matter of timing. It was the time of year.
Well, I think the.
That's just my opinion.
The pending circumstance is a little stronger now than it was then, you know, that was maybe a nice progressive suggestion. Now it's more a we've we've got to do something with this.
And they tabled it because there wasn't an impending reason.
Right.
To move forward.
I think there's more reasons than that personally.
Might actually.
Well, when I when I presented the question to everybody that came to my test is, look, we can wait and have this happen to us. For we can be proactive and, you know, and put this where we want it. With the exception of the guy who said, you're not doing enough. Essentially told us to man up and and fight the state. Well, yeah, it's it's. In the first place, there's nothing you can do with that. But the 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 fight. So we have to give kudos here to the League of Cities and Towns who has fought this political battle for several years since before the pandemic and has held the legislature at bay and said, let us, let the cities fix this. We can fix this. We don't need directive from the state. The and that's where all these goals came from. These goals are. The end goal, the the bigger goal here is that cities fix this moderate income housing problem. This and and we've been very conservative, and I think we were wise to be conservative for the past several years as we've seen how this worked out. But I I personally think it's time that we act. We only have a few pieces of ground really that are big enough. And to see those master planned. My hope, and and we can't guarantee this, my hope is that it gets Far West away from having to use infill to meet goals. Because then you take literally any piece of property and they find a way to put multi-story apartments or townhomes on it. And it's happening as we speak in other cities in the state. Right.
Once they pass our mix mixed use, then we can rezone areas.
Well, somebody would have to come in and they'd come in, they'd request a rezone, they'd have to have forty acres. And.
I thought that was raised up. At one time it was like seventy.
No.
You're talking about a mixed.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right, not the mixed residential density. That's the one I've never got.
Sorry, mixed use.
Sorry.
But we could.
So.
Before, right?
Okay, I remember now.
What we proposed, we would like there, but we still need a developer to come.
Not if if we don't, if you legally can't do it in the city, we can't put it in the general plan. And right now they can't do that. The city would have to, and then we could revise the general plan. This is, we want what we called mixed use residential in in, you know, some very specific areas. Then and the goal then would be that, you know, then we can, we can point. We have met the goal. We have identified where that needs to go. And we've identified that that we don't want a contractor to come in and say, I'm going to build the townhome portion of it and leave. That, you know, they have to. They have to, yeah.
And that's progressive thinking because you're not only saying we're allowing it. We're going so far as to say where we think would be best positioned in the city.
Right, and and.
We haven't crossed that bridge yet, but I think we ought to.
If we don't, we're going to lose the areas that we were.
Right.
Well, don't with those five choices, we have to start putting stuff into our general plan or at least.
Well, no. So so two of the two of the goals in the general plan have already been achieved. What they did is there was one goal that essentially said you maintained what you had. So the Randall Acres, Country Place and Westwood Village. We essentially just said we would work to maintain those communities. And that met the goal that was originally set with Senate Bill thirty six, I think it was, it was Senator Hendricks' bill, I believe. Anyway. That has been removed. So we need to put another one in. Which it would be real easy to add the senior housing essentially in into the general plan as is. But that's not enough. And so, again, we can just wait. The the problem with waiting, if if the land gets developed, then we no longer have that ability to control our destiny. And and then, as I said, my fear is that we start dealing with infill where we're not able to mix these uses. We just get. I think what's going to happen with the property over here is if that sits vacant for the next forty years, at some point, there's going to be four-story either condominiums or apartment buildings in in that space.
And and I. There are some places where mixed use residential makes a lot of sense. Mixed use, this mixed use makes sense for part of that property north of twenty seven hundred north. Where you could get commercial mixed with residential, that makes some sense. We've got a big chunk of land on the church farm with a lot of it a budding, the canal and so forth. There are some places where I think we could, we could do it and not really create the problem people perceive with higher density. But but I I think we ought to be putting it in the the master plan and saying that this is our vision. So.
Okay, well. We want specifics We can request mixed use residential. Now, the city does not have to respond. City council has no requirement to answer that question. But we can surely ask it and see what happens. I I think this was worthwhile. If we were to have another one of these, are we going to get different answers?
Yeah, we ask different questions.
So, and and no, and that and that's fair. Let's first say, let's say that we did a the open house, we put it over here, so we were all together. And we asked the exact same questions. Are we going to get different answers?
I'm guessing the ones where you have a strong majority, no. You know, when you've got a thirty six to five, I'd be very surprised if it shifts much. And we're dealing with twenty five to fifteen. That's more questionable.
Part of me wonders if instead of printing out sheets and distributing people around, if we do it in the rec center next time. And we open up a a survey app live, you you, there's stuff out there where you can type in an address on your phone. And we take them through a question and say, do you support such and such and such? The green button is yes, the red button is no, everybody answer this question now. And we just take them through and get everybody's answer all at once. Right? We could even, I I mean, there's lots of ways to to improve this, right? To get more than thirty three percent of the respondents.
So better than half of the people that came to this couldn't couldn't do that.
Be the kind to go open up a website on that. Yeah, okay, that's fair.
But these are the people who are being checked over the fence.
Right? These are the people that are interested.
Well, they're trying to do it live, but they all have like a computer.
Well, and how do you sort out the difference between apathy and being just flat out lazy? I mean.
I I don't know. We do need to get into our meeting. Steve, will you pray for us? Darren, will you read us in the pledge? Darren, I need you or Brandon on the dais. In Geneva's seat.
All right, and I'll put your chairs.
Thanks, Lou.
I'll get a chair, Lou. I'll get your.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh. Think I can run this one? It's just an electronic agenda?
Sliding over so my whole body's not in. Play part of it.
Somebody's sitting here?
Nope.
Won't be there.
I think we could put a pickleball battle on the end of one of those tracks tomorrow.
Good idea.
Get you out there on the court.
Well, maybe I had a challenge in Lyle, I would have a chance of.
He's gonna bring up the agenda for me.
Got it.
We're doing this all electronic today, see if it works. Don't get lost.
You picked a good agenda.
Yeah, two PDS, can't beat that.
So Steve, during reports, if you could plan on just showing us what came up on.
Oh, yeah, let me get that up fast.
Lay here just a bit. You gotta put this within reach of you.
Oh, I gotta have my hammer, thank you.
They want to.
I'm gonna put another pad on that.
Put some flannel, just to cush. All right, we ready, Steve?
Yes, sir.
So we'll call to order the meeting in the Far West City Planning Commission. We appreciate those who have joined us this evening. We'll begin our meeting with an opening ceremony. Darren will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and then Steve will offer an opening prayer. If you'll all rise, please.
Please repeat the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, our Father, we're grateful for this opportunity to meet as a planning commission and to discuss the needs of our city and its residents. We ask for thy blessing to be upon us, to guide us to find the answers and resolutions and things that we can do to help to resolve a lot of these questions and please help us, Father, in reaching out to the public and being able to get their attention and come up with good ideas to allow them to participate and to be more involved in the planning that we're doing. We ask you to please watch over our city leaders, our state leaders and leaders of our nation as well, help them make. leaders of our nation as well, help them make good choices that will benefit us as citizens of this great nation. We're grateful for what we have. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Janelle will not, she had a conflict, she'd hoped she'd be here. I can either read her report, or if everyone is confident with what went on in the last city council meeting, we can skip that. What's the pleasure of the planning commission? Okay, we'll move to the next item on the agenda then, is to set a public hearing for August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, to consider the request of a rezone of the Far West, oh.
Sorry, you were reading that.
Thank you, Steve. Far West Point LLC property located on the North Far West City boundary east of I-15. Parcel number given from an A-one zone to an M-one zone. Is the planning commission interested in setting a public hearing?
I vote we've set a public hearing for August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two.
Motion by, motion by Greg to set a public hearing as requested on the aforementioned property. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lou, further discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Is there a motion?
I recommend we approve the minutes from July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two.
Motion by Greg to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Darren. Further discussion to the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a report on assignments. We'll start with Steve's report on the, uh, the videos, the YouTube videos, and the responses we got from those. Steve?
All right, so, first thing I want to say is we need to continue to push for more answers to these surveys. So as you can see, we are still in the realm of statistically insignificant. Those are the numbers of responses for each of the surveys that have been completed. I am noticing that the very first introduction has the most views. There are the most surveys. It also has the least relevant questions of all the surveys. And I'm, I'm concerned that people are dropping off after that. One of my concerns is that we, in our efforts to try to, to create pieces of people to bite off and chew, we've still created too many pieces. So a, as a part of this report, I just want to say that I, I'd, I'd recommend that, you know, in the spirit of what Lou was saying about, we talked about it, we talked about it. I, I think it's time to pick out of each of these segments maybe what the next actual project is, right? If it's land use, maybe cemetery. If it's parks and rec, maybe it's what's the next park? And, and focus on those instead of continuing to, or, or I should say, in addition to collecting answers on the broader scale. So let me just show you what these look like though, if we, if we just start with chapter one. So the site's nice because it, it aggregates all this information for you and it includes any commentary. So some of these questions are pretty basic, but here's, for example, you know, maintaining the rural character of the city. Most people obviously believe that we should. Again, these are very very small numbers. So the more data we get, the more accurate these findings will become. Here's a question as far as how well are we communicating with the residents? So we're about half and half. And that's, that's, frankly, that's also evident by the number of responses. Now, we can't force people to get on the computer and do these things, but my greater concern is that we have put up some signs in a few part of the city and made some, made one or two posts on Facebook and that's it, and that's simply not going to reach a, a broad spectrum of people. Far West City sponsored events. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these, just take a quick peek if you'd like. We're also capturing the events that have been attended. So the Freedom Festival is obviously very popular, at least based on the number of responses that we've had. I, I suspect that this will be pretty similar as we get more response. And then, you know, majority of people think we're doing fine with the number of events that we currently host as a city. And then, you know, here are some, here's some commentary, right? So th, this is where we can get more detailed information. We can aggregate these if needs be. Some of these are going to be wild out, wild out their opinions, just like you've seen from the, the town, the open house responses, but a lot of these are going to have legitimately good ideas that we can build upon. So similar to the response on the open house, fewer people answer this question as far as, do you want to help out? And again, more commentary. So I'm, in, in the spirit of not taking up too much time, I'm going to skip over some of these things. We don't need to go into the responses for the addresses, but if, do you have any, Mr. Chairman, that you'd like to look at specifically, or do you want to go through all of them?
No, I, I think we're, I thought we had more responses than this. I know we've had more people watch the videos than this.
I was going to say, if I have a quick comment, it looks like that community vision had a hundred and ninety-six views and how many answered?
Uh, we can look that up, let's take a peek.
Comparison to how many are looking at it versus how many are taking the survey?
I, yeah, I, I've had multiple people and nothing but, as I said earlier in our work session, very, very good responses. People were impressed with those videos.
Two hundred and seventy-three on the first video. Let's see, this did not load up. And this, you know, part of this could be the breaking down of YouTube, right? So this is part of a playlist. I've also noticed that some people do have a problem finding this link down here. It's, there's nothing we can do about that. YouTube doesn't let us put links directly in the videos anymore, which is why the end of every single video ends in a big down arrow saying, look down here, in the video description. So we're limited by the technology in some regards. Although I am noticing that this doesn't link to anymore. Here we go, here's land use. So as part of a playlist, there's supposed to be a window right here that takes you through every single video. So a hundred and ninety-three views here. So yeah, we are definitely a hundred and ten on economics, a hundred and thirty-seven. So we're getting more, definitely more views than responses. I'm certainly open to ideas as to how to get people to bridge that gap between watching the video and answering the survey, but I suspect that a lot of it is just they, they're not interested in.
Yeah, and two primary causes. One is apathy, the other one is contentment. If you're content, you think, well, I don't really need to fill out the, the survey because status quo is fine with me.
Mm-hmm.
I think there's also some fear, especially with our older citizens of filling something out online.
That's true, yeah.
So, but
I'm guessing they're probably more likely to
Right, but I don't, I don't know. Clearly, they didn't fill out the paper copy either, so I don't know.
Twelve to fifteen responses. That's not only not statistically significant, I would even suggest it may not even be representative.
No. But I, like I said, I do know that people very much appreciated the videos. So I, they, they were a success in their own right.
Another thing I was thinking is that this is under its own separate Far West general plan, but it doesn't look like it was linked anywhere to the city's YouTube page. So I was like, at one point, I was like, how do I get to these again?
There's more we can do, certainly.
I had trouble with that, too.
Just because it was its own separate, like, group. And I was like, what?
Yeah, so if we go to the city's website, I know the mayor did have it put up here. General plan update. It's about as big as you can get. And then here's the link to the video. So if I click on one of these, it should just link me to the YouTube video. Honestly, I don't know how you can make it easier than that from the website.
Well, I was just looking at the Far West, like, actual YouTube page. So like, if you were watching the city council.
Well, we can't put the videos on there because it's a different account. So.
Okay.
You can link to the videos, but you can't put the videos on that account.
Let's give this all some thought. I, I, I think we need to chew on this a little bit and in, at our next meeting, let's see if there's, and maybe we've done all that we need to do. We, we have given adequate opportunity for anybody that truly wanted to watch the videos, take the surveys. The, the online surveys were and are available. The written surveys actually were available and still are available to anybody that comes in and wants to fill one out. And so anybody that wants to give input can. And so at some point, we have to say, this is all the input we're going to get. And we might be there, frankly. So give this some thought. We'll talk about this again in two weeks. And, and maybe it's time with some minor tweaks just to move the general plan forward. Doesn't mean that we can't change it over time. But we have to at least consider the fact, the, the potential fact that, that this is all we're going to get. So anyway, Steve, thank you very much. Brandon, do you have a report for us tonight? Hey, we're going to have public comment in a minute.
I don't have much else to add.
Okay.
We'll see you guys on the twenty-fifth. I'll be there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Brandon?
I would just like to say that I think that that open house went well. Maybe we could get more people, but I think we did a lot of the stuff we, we should have, and I felt we had a pretty good turnout. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you. Lyle?
Had a park meeting last week on the third. Got the update on the pump track. One thing that I enjoyed being during the open house, being over there, I made more trips out the door to show folks the pump track. Everybody thinks that's a great idea. Everybody's excited. The fact that what it's going to, what's costing us, you know, everybody's just ecstatic. They've dumped road base out there now. They're going to put, they're going to work on that access road, the emergency access road from Far West Drive. And then they're going to use that also as part of the parking lot for the pump track. Water lines have been run, so that's moving forward. As, right now, it's season, it's the season for grants, and so they're working, we're working on getting different grants. We're going to start working on the, the Mountain View Park first as far as updating the playground. That playground's over twenty years old. So that's the first on the list, but we're working on grants now, and I'm working on trying to find grants for the ADA dock out of the Smith's Park. Everybody loves the idea. But there's got, we just feel like there's got to be something out there specifically for the disabled. And so I'm going to be working on that project for quite some time, but other than that, it's just a, just a quick meeting.
Pretty good, thanks. Lou?
No specific comments on my summons, other than I think we did probably the best job we've ever done in informing the public.
Greg?
Nothing at this time.
Darren? And I have nothing to report, other than I, I very much appreciate the effort that went into the open house. I think it was better advertised than any open house we've done, and I think it, it actually was presented very, very well. I do agree with Lou. I think you get more sense of community when you're all in one room. But on the whole, I, I was very, very pleased. So I would like to express our appreciation to Mackenzie for being with us this evening and taking our minutes and keeping us on track. I'll entertain a final motion.
Move that we adjourn.
Motion by Steve to adjourn, second by Greg. Further discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.
I was looking forward to that part.
That's, that's not our record. I think our